Sorry, you could go ahead and begin.
Thank you very much. I'd like to go ahead and call this Tampa City Council's special call meeting to order if we can have roll call, please.
Viero.
Here.
Goods.
Here.
Rosen.
Here.
Ding Felder.
Here.
Citro.
Yes.
Miranda. Maniscalco.
Here. All right, Mr. Shelby, if you'd like to go ahead, sir, before we go to public comment.
Thank you. Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of Tampa City Council, Martin Shelby, City Council Attorney. Today is Thursday, September 10th, 2020, and because of the COVID-19 state of emergency, this virtual special call meeting of the Tampa City Council is being held in accordance with the declarations and provisions of the Governor's Executive Order 20-69, as extended by EO 20-179 and EO 20-193, and by City Council Resolution Number 220-225, and as amended by Resolution Number 220-490. It's being conducted by audio teleconferencing with video presentations, remote presentations, and remote participation, which is referred to by the State of Florida statutes and rules as communication media technology. The purpose of today's special call meeting is to receive a report and update from the administration on the city's mental health initiative. The public and the citizens of Tampa are able to watch and view this meeting on cable TV and the Internet, and have the opportunity to participate through alternative methods rather than in-person, including the Internet and the web, voicemail by mail, and speaking remotely during public comment, live and in-person by doing so at the technology that's made available at the Tampa Convention Center. Written comments have been distributed to City Council and are made part of the record. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I turn the meeting back to you.
Thank you very much. Since we have one person at the Tampa Convention Center, can we go ahead and go there first and then go to the live comment?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, if you could please state your name for the record, and I'll start the clock at three minutes for you.
Okay, yes, thank you. My name's Craig Fox. Let me know when you're ready.
Go ahead, go ahead. You're ready.
Thank you. Oh, is it good?
Go ahead and speak. You're good.
Okay, okay, sorry. Yeah, yeah, thanks for the opportunity to talk. I'd just like to raise some concerns that I have. The main concern is with TPD taking ownership over the study. TPD has effectively ignored the will of the people. In multiple public comments, we have requested a program similar to CAHoots in Eugene, Oregon. And in that program, a team of medical responders, unarmed medical responders, are the people that show up. They take around 20% of the calls out there in Eugene, Oregon. What TPD is proposing is a co-responder model that is just completely not necessary. And the reason why it's not necessary is because CAHoots out in Oregon, which stands for Crisis Helping Out on the Streets, they've been doing this for 31 years, and in 31 years, they haven't had a single death of a team member or a citizen they were assisting, or a serious injury. So the safety data is just not there for suggesting some other model out of Texas or some other state. This seems honestly like more of a power grab and more of, it seems like TPD is just kind of hell-bent on just maintaining power and control, even though we repeatedly hear from different public officials that the police are overwhelmed with too many social service things. So if you don't want social service, then stop trying to take over it, especially when the citizens come up with a very effective way to handling it. CAHoots only costs $2 million a year to run. That is really, really cheap. Another thing I'd like to mention is that I'd like to request the City Council also looks at, since we're looking at a million dollars, and thank you so much for proposing that, we need to also look at violence reduction programs. The People's Safety Coalition has emailed us to all the City Council members so far, and that includes two example programs. One is the Office of Neighborhood Safety, or the Operation Peacemaker Fellowship out of Richmond, California. And the other one is Violence Interrupters, which works in multiple cities in New York and in Chicago. And both those programs either cost $2 million a year or $600,000 a year, and are proven to reduce gun violence by 60%. I'm a resident of East Tampa, so when the guns, when the shots pop off, that's my family, that's my community that's being shot at. And we really, really need to consider this program, too. Again, thank you so much for the opportunity to talk. We reached out to a couple of City Council members. The People's Safety Coalition has made contact with both CAHoots, and we have a meeting with them next week. And we also have had meetings with Violence Interrupters. That's one of the violence reduction programs. We'll be following up with City Council members. We'll request for meetings. We've already followed up with some of you, and we look forward to continuing this process. Again, please take this out of the purview of TPD. We request that it goes to another office to lead the study. Some other offices that can possibly do it are Human Resources could possibly do it. Another office, sorry, I had to list them. So Human Resources, Human Rights Office can do it in the city of Tampa. Even Emergency Management Technology Innovation, there's a whole host of different programs, organizations within City Council. Thank you. Appreciate the time.
Thank you very. All right. Is there anybody else at the Tampa Convention Center that is here for public comment?
No, sir. That would be it.
Thank you very much. We have, I believe, nine individuals to speak. If you'd like to go ahead and begin, unmute yourself as your name is called. You have three minutes, and I will start the timer once you begin.
All right. The first speaker we have is Ardeja Floyd.
Hello, everyone. My name's Ardeja Floyd, and I wanted to speak on the cop off of Dean Felder being quoted in a recent Creative Lothing article, saying that TPD was going to negotiate a contract and get back the City Council. Advocates have been extremely clear from day one that any crisis intervention program should not be negotiated or organized, or should not be anything by TPD. This is absolutely not the process we wanted, not the process we advocated for, not even the model of CAHoots, like Craig was just saying, which just hasn't operated for 30 years without. It's actually quite mind-boggling to me why you would think that we would want something when we connect to the police, when we've explicitly said we want to defund the police. You would have actually heard us when we said that if you weren't so open on legitimizing the police to do things that are contrary to their job function. But you're not even willing to have that conversation. That would actually require you to pause for a second, realize the tension between law, order, and the discretion to use force, and giving someone the actual care and attention they need when in crisis. You would realize that as a country, we're not good at handling crisis. So especially cops, the people trained to use discretion and force with state-handed weapons are especially not capable of doing that work. That would have also taken you to be a little bit more critical and careful in questioning the current system we find ourselves in, and actually have the guts, to be honest, about what solutions will be needed. If you were as serious about having this conversation like we were, and actually taking the time to think, then you would know that a small tweak to the system, simply adding social workers to cop calls, will never be enough. You would understand that the problem is much bigger, much more fundamental. And because the truth is, lots of crime is the result of people in crisis, and housing crisis, and food crisis, and crisis simply because this country does not give people the resources to effectively manage crises. You know what they do for people in crisis? They send cops, people who can use force and discretion. So that's our current mode of handling crisis, and that's why we have 20% of people in jails and state prisons with mental illnesses. That's why people with mental illnesses are 16 times more likely to be killed. That's why 25 to 50% of facial encounters with law enforcement involve people with mental illnesses. And those are conservative estimates. According to the Treatment Advocacy Center, in every county in the U.S. that has a county jail and a county psychiatric facility, the jail has more mentally severely mentally ill individuals, at least three times more. So why would we settle for sending cops with a mere 40 hours' worth of crisis intervention training out when we can send people who literally spend their entire careers doing that? It's because the point is not safety. The point is domination and control, which again is the function of the police. In a recent article, again, by Creative Lothing, Natasha Pierre, the Executive Director of the National Alliance of Mental Illnesses, said, "Far too long it's been left up to the law enforcement to determine the severity, I guess, or the degree of crisis in any situation. Having some of these calls be filtered and funneled into behavioral health professionals ensures that, one, we can lessen the load of law enforcement, deputies in the police department, and we can ensure better outcomes." Mental health.
Thank you very much.
Law enforcement involving health crisis just doesn't make sense at all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Jordana Yampolsky.
Hello, Councilman. Like others have said, we really are asking that this new mental health initiative program, mirror programs like CAHoots out in Eugene, Oregon, again, they send non-cop teams of EMTs, nurses, and social workers out for 911 calls related to these non-crime-related things. People with mental health illnesses, again, account for up to 50% of people that are killed by the police. Cops are not medical professionals. No one thinks they are. They don't think they are. We need to stop tying crime to mental health crises. It's unnecessary, and it's wrong, and it's just, it's just wrong. We all know it's not true. In July, the city of St. Pete decided police will no longer respond to nonviolent 911 calls. And then, on the contrary, a week ago, we hired 25 new Tampa Police Department officers. And then, again, a month ago, St. Pete turned down a multimillion-dollar grant to hire officers, instead creating the Community Assistance Liaison. It's not enough, but it definitely is a start, and it's really expected of you all to decide that this is the way Tampa needs to go as well. We've been out for months, and we've been calling, and we've been writing. I'd like to mention that, Councilman Ding Felder, your voicemail's been full for at least a week, so maybe you could get on that. So I think that's all I have to say. I think you guys hear us, and it will be very obvious with your decision if you are ready to serve your public servant roles or not. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Matthew Yampolsky.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Okay, so I could sit here and give you a bunch of stats that everybody else has given you, but you guys have shown time and time again, you guys aren't worried about the facts. Like, you don't want to be confused by the facts. So maybe I can dummy it down for you guys a little bit. So cops are not doctors. Cops are not medical workers. Why would a cop respond to a medical situation? My dad recently had a heart attack. Why would a cop show up to help my dad in a cardiac arrest event? No, they wouldn't. So why are you sending a guy with a gun who has literally no training, zero training on this, to a situation where, again, other people have said this, but there are people that have spent their entire adult lives training for this exact situation, and we're sending some guy with maybe, I guess, a high school diploma with a gun to calm things down? That makes zero sense. That makes zero sense. Okay? Cops are not trained social workers. They're not counselors. Like, you know, there's surveys conducted by the Police Executive Research Forum found that officers received an average of eight hours total dedicated to crisis intervention training. Meanwhile, recruits spend roughly 60 hours learning how to use their gun. Okay, so this is like, I don't understand how you guys can't look at this and see that the cops are not needed in this situation. Okay, so that's where I'll leave it on that. On a more personal note, Councilman Citro, last week you denied that your aide told me that the homeless situation is a county problem, not a city problem. So if you deny that he said that, then you are saying that you do think it is a city problem and not a county problem. So I ask you, Mr. Citro, what is it that you're going to do about it? Okay, because it seems like we have $162 million sitting there for Chief Dugan to spend at his, however he likes, and another $13 million to give his staff a raise. Okay, so if you deny that it's a city problem, the homeless crisis, then what is it? Okay, I'd like an explanation of that, because honestly, it's way more offensive that you deny that it's a city problem than even Charlie Miranda reading a newspaper ad in the middle of public comment. It's like even more disgraceful than that. So I hope you can respond to that like you responded last week. I yield my time.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Justin Coffey. Mr. Coffey, please unmute your line.
Hi, can you all hear me?
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Good morning. My name is Justin Coffey. Thank you for having this hearing. This is obviously a very important discussion, and I appreciate Councilman Ding Felder raising this to the attention of the people in the city. And I also obviously appreciate the community members who really drove this to be spoken about in the first place. So in addition to what I said tonight, not much will I reiterate, except for the most important fact of producing a program here in the city that is in most in line with CAHoots, which has inspired several cities across the nation, including Denver, Houston, and Dallas, and multiple other cities, to look into having their own crisis intervention program. However, I think that the most important aspect is having one that does not send out police officers, but instead the EMT, nurses, social workers, people who are well-equipped to handle these matters. CAHoots in 2019 responded to a total of 24,000 calls, and only about 150 of them required police backup. So just as a matter of efficiency, I don't think that it would make sense to send out police officers as well. Obviously, the most important thing, I think, would be to have the mental health experts lead the creation of a pilot program like this, and really speak to the effectiveness of having police present. I believe that people going through a crisis may not do much better seeing someone with a badge or a gun at their head. And with that, I yield my time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Yes, sir. The next speaker is Alexa Rotberg. If you can hear me, please unmute your line.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Hello. Local activists-led research has culminated an activist-proposed creation of a crisis response team that will work in conjunction with TPD and Tampa's larger social services network to independently respond to nonviolent, mental health-related calls. Such a program is modeled after the CAHoots program in Eugene, Oregon, as we've heard, which was established in 1969 to improve community relations with the city's police department. Similar programs, as stated, have been organized in cities like Denver and Oakland, and the CAHoots organization even consults out their services and trains other cities and police departments on how to implement the program. Above all else, the proposed crisis response team will have to be a collaborative effort between the city, TPD, a nonprofit entity, and the Tampa's numerous human services providers. The proposed program would entail that 911 dispatchers be trained to identify nonviolent calls received through TPD that do not require law enforcement response. Nonviolent calls would be diverted to crisis response teams that would respond independent of TPD to mental health-related calls. These teams are typically comprised of two people, an EMT and a licensed social worker, who connect those struggling with mental health issues to appropriate healthcare and social service providers throughout the Bay Area. In some instances, when appropriate, these teams may respond to violent calls alongside TPD. But for the most part, the principle of a program like CAHoots is that mental health professionals are not officers, and officers are not mental health professionals. They provide two separate services within the realm of public safety, and as such, should be dispatched for different types of calls. This, in theory and practice, saves police departments valuable tax dollars by allocating our public safety resources more efficiently and appropriately. In 2019, Chief Dugan told the Tampa Bay Times that a program like CAHoots that diverts mental health calls was a goal for TPD. Chief Dugan voiced his support for such a call diversion program, stating, "Working with our partners, maybe we can divert some of these calls to experts in the mental health field as opposed to sending police officers." Due to this recent quote from Chief Dugan, it's a little troubling to activists that have participated in talks with the mayor and TPD that they are insisting on a crisis response team that includes an officer riding along with a mental health professional. This type of program is referred to as CERT, Crisis Intervention Response Team, and is being implemented in cities like Houston and Dallas. The key distinction between this type of program and the one supported by activists is that the CERT program fails to divert calls away from law enforcement officers, but instead shoves the role of mental health professionals even farther upon police officers who are already stressed at addressing violent calls. Thus, these programs fall short of being considered a true mental health response, and do not result in the cost savings to public service budgets, or lessen the burden on law enforcement and ambulance resources. Movement behind this type of crisis response team program has gained significant momentum since last week's meeting. Activists have even been lucky enough to have preliminary conversations with the mayor and TPD. However, I think it's important to note that these conversations, in any formation of a mental health crisis response team, cannot take place in a vacuum, and amongst the very few voices TPD and the mayor will listen to behind closed doors. These conversations need to be had in the open with all parts of the community in order for any program to be effective and for community relations with TPD to improve. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. All right. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Razell Coffey.
Hi, my name is Razell Coffey. I think my brother highlighted a key component that is integral to the success of this program. I have no doubt that the motion for a mental health and social welfare response program will pass. The only thing I urge the councilmen is to push for the involvement of mental health experts at the inception of this program. The sooner they are implemented into the pipeline of collaboration, the more the people of Tampa will be assured that this will be a robust and effective program. For many of us, this has been long overdue, and this is an urgent matter. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Rachel Howe.
Hello. Thank you for your time today. I want to echo sentiments of all my fellow citizens today, and I want to voice my support for the creation of the Mental Health Task Force or the Crisis Intervention Services. I also want to thank all of the City Council members that voiced their support for this initiative last week, and especially Councilman Ding Felder for bringing the motion forward. I mostly also want to thank community members that have been fighting for this. Like it's been said, that this has definitely been a call, a call for change for a long time, and I'm glad that it's finally coming to the forefront. I also want to voice my support for the pilot program to look like CAHoots that many people have talked about, and where it would only have those crisis intervention or mental health experts responding to these calls. Also, again, last week, Councilman Ding Felder did a great job describing the details, and he gave some good statistics on the program, and it illustrated how it will answer multiple things. One, it'll answer the people's call for change. It'll alleviate some responsibility from Tampa police. It'll save the city money, but most importantly of all, it will save lives. So I strongly urge the council to continue to support this initiative, and to hopefully grant enough funding for a robust program, to use Councilman Ding Felder's words himself. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Megan Thomas.
Good morning, council members. My name's Megan Thomas, and I'm a community advocate as well as an occupational therapy doctoral student. And as someone in the health field, my training includes finding creative, evidence-based ways on how to effectively de-spiritize health crises. And the reason I'm calling in today is to ask that the city's new mental health initiative be a collaboration between the city and a local nonprofit healthcare entity with mental health experts taking the lead on this. In reality, it does not make sense for the Tampa Police Department to be in charge of heading such a health-based program. In fact, I would even go as far as to say it's negligent. And after decades of tasking officers with handling people who have mental health issues, we've seen these situations go south way too many times. And when people are already in a delicate mental state, and then see an officer with a gun and a uniform pull up, this could just escalate the situations from nonviolent to violent in an instant. Let the mental health experts do their job. As stated in the previous public comments, there's already evidence that this works in other cities, specifically with the CAHoots program only needing police backup for about 1% of the calls received. So if we send out a co-response with an officer, not only will it cost us more money for the city, it defeats the purpose of the entire program. And if we're going to do this, let's do whatever we can to get this right. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please. Is this our final speaker, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. This is our final speaker, and it will be Grant Loverin.
All right, go ahead.
Hey, good morning, gentlemen. Grant here. So a few quick things. It cannot be overemphasized enough how police backup was only needed 1% of the time with the CAHoots program. I'd also like to plant the seed for doing some research into a violence interrupters program to reduce violence in the community. That's definitely the next thing we can work on once we get this ironed out. And I'd also like to make a suggestion for how this is formatted. So the way it works now is us activists talk for a while, then you all talk for a while. We don't really get an opportunity to really fully listen and respond to each other. So I'd like to yield the rest of my three minutes to any council member that has a comment or a question, and I have my colleague there in person that can respond to it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Typically, in public comment, we just hear from the public. We don't respond, unless any council members have anything to say, but generally, public comment is where we receive feedback and listen. Any council members? All right, Madam Clerk, does that conclude our public comment?
That concludes the public comment portion of the agenda, Chair.
Thank you very much. Now we go into item one, the only item here. Who would like to kick this discussion off? I know Councilman Ding Felder brought this up. Unless staff is on the line, or the chief of staff, anybody would like to begin. Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Councilman Felder.
Yeah, and I did want to respond to all those, all those community folks who called in and who are taking their time to address this in a very serious manner. Overall, I think that the comments were positive and not too attacking. And I think that's the way we all need to work together, you know? We have, you know, every community has some issues. Um and uh and I and I think uh anyway, I just wanted to thank them for the for their input, um for the time they've spent into this uh, you know, researching and um and all that. I don't want them to think that we're not listening because we are listening, and um and we're going to work closely with the administration uh on this as we move forward. I had a a good, long uh chat with the mayor last night, with the chief of police this morning, John Bennett, several times over the last couple of days. And uh and I think that uh, you know, we're all going to move forward, working together on this in a positive way. I'll I'll look forward to, I think TPD's on the line, is going to report to us, and then I'll chime in afterwards.
Thank you very much. All right, who else wishes to speak? Anything else? Any uh presentation? Anybody wishes to go?
Yeah, I think we could hear from TPD would be would be a good way to go, but that's up to you, Ms. Jones.
All right, whomever we have from TPD, if it's the chief of police or whoever's on the line.
Good afternoon, Chairman. This is John Bennett, chief of staff, and good afternoon, council. And to the listening public, uh we appreciate the opportunity to uh share with you today over this one agenda item. We also appreciate the fact that council was willing to do a special call meeting on this very important item. Um as we've heard both from the public and from council uh during the uh the development of the program, if you will, uh as we move forward, we are going to uh turn this over to TPD in a second. I'll start with Chief Dugan. And we also have Assistant Chief Lee Burkhaw here. Uh we also have Morris Massey and Dennis Rehera, if you need to call in any other staff members for any specific questions. But I just want to start out globally, uh being with the city for thirty-one years, um of course, seeing the social uh challenges in the community, whether it's homelessness, mental health, socioeconomic issues, uh you know, I can go back eight years ago where the mayor specifically took out her budget an opportunity to create the homeless liaison program. And we actually gave vouchers to the front lines to house people in an emergency with the Salvation Army. So, you know, this administration is looking forward to growth in this area and creating the right prevention and the right response system, and then whatever it takes to find the funding or the co-funding to get this done. So with that, I'll turn it over to Chief Dugan for some startup comments, and then we'll move into a brief presentation. Chief?
Uh good morning, council. Brian Dugan, chief of police. Um I I want to thank the members of the of the public who uh spoke out. I want them to know that I certainly am listening. I'm very passionate on our response to people who may be having a mental health crisis and how we can help them. It's something that I have been looking into in my three years of chief of police. Uh it doesn't, it just is a very sensitive topic. So I will cut right to the chase. I have with me Assistant Chief Lee Burkhaw, who is kind of spearheading the project. I'm very much involved in it. And just to reassure everyone that spoke today, we are going to work with mental health professionals as we build this, and I don't want that to get lost in the in the shuffle. So Chief Burkhaw will explain more in detail.
Good afternoon, council. Lee Burkhaw, Assistant Chief of Operations. And we should have a PowerPoint presentation that should come up on your screen momentarily. Just waiting for it to pop up. Counsel, I'm not seeing it on my end. I'm not sure if you all are seeing it.
I have the PowerPoint up. Um I need CCTV to channel it.
There it goes. Okay, if you could go to the next slide. All right, so uh council, as as discussed by the chief of staff and the chief of police, our policing strategies have evolved over the years. And the prior approach to mental health was um criminalization of mental illness by incarcerating those in mental health. And we realize that that's ineffective, and we are taking steps, and we do take this very serious. And we do want experts to give us the information on how to develop this program. So I'll walk you through some of our preliminary research and then where we plan to go to get the experts' opinions on how to develop a program that's best for this community. Some of the stats that may have already been covered by some of the community members is the problem is is the amount of mental illness that's out there. The National Alliance on Mental Illness reports one in five adults experience mental health condition every year, and one in twenty actually live with a serious mental illness such as schizophrenia or bipolar disorder. There's high utilizers that are dependent on mental health services and/or resources that are out there, and we feel a program could help, not only the city but those utilizers as well. Uh TPD is committed to the mental health uh concerns and announced back in December of twenty nineteen that all officers and dispatchers would receive forty hours of crisis intervention training, and that's above and beyond the basic training. Uh TPD also pioneered um department scenario-based training, including de-escalation techniques. And these scenarios were actually geared towards officers' reactions, and the scenarios would adjust based on how they handled the situation. Uh in those scenarios, we teach a tactical pause, and we teach critical decision-making skills. And based on Dr. Brianna Fox and her USF findings from the mayor's community task force on policing, we will add additional de-escalation training to our curriculum. And uh the Chief Dugan already mentioned that last week in his press conference, and that would be the Police Executive Research Forum ICAT Training or Integrating Communications Assessment and Tactics. Uh TPD also recently updated their crisis intervention team policy, which consists of specialized-trained officers above and beyond all the other officers whose goal is to attempt to restore the individual to a pre-crisis level. Um TPD, as mentioned before, has two dedicated officers assigned to assisting a homeless population and providing resources and referrals and services and housing to the homeless in our area. Uh the last bullet point I have on here is um what you may not realize is our organization has sponsored uh an agreement with the Bureau of Justice Assistance and a valor program for crisis intervention training. And this is ongoing. It has been placed on hold with COVID, but it is re-energized where this uh organization is assisting us with our curriculum and developing training. Uh next slide. This slide actually covers some data that we reviewed, and it highlights uh a three-year average in averaging about fifty-eight hundred calls per year on potential uh assisted aided cases. And in those calls, we averaged Sector F, C, and D as the high-frequency areas. And Sector F is our downtown corridor, which was the most active with these types of calls. Uh our peak times for these types of calls are occurring between nine and midnight, and we're hoping with additional research, we can narrow that window down even more. So the Tampa Police Department does recognize the need for an innovative mental health program and is committed to implementing the best solution for the entire city. Uh we do have a sense of urgency in applying this. Uh however, we want to approach this with evidence-based research and best practices using a broad scope. Um our initial research, uh next slide, looked into seven different programs. The first one I'll highlight, which was mentioned uh by several of the callers, is the Eugene, Oregon Police Department Program. This is uh called Kahoots, which you all know about. Uh it stands for Crisis Assistance Helping Out on the Streets. This program's a longstanding program in partnership between the police department and a nonprofit called the Whitebird Clinic. Program is run by a police lieutenant by the name of Ron Tinsit, who advises the mental health counselors responding crews. And that's a paired team. Uh one crew is on twenty-four-seven for a citywide approach, and a second crew comes on during the peak hour, starting around eleven AM. The teams do respond without law enforcement when possible. However, the lieutenant stressed that their crew's safety is their priority, and they do have Leo respond with them when they're needed. Um the crew also addresses uh referral of social services. They do uh check on the welfare calls, so they do some other calls in addition to mental illness calls. However, one thing I noted that they didn't do in their plan was a preventative and follow-up plan, which is something that we're looking at expanding that area as well. The lieutenant told me that their crew is not licensed clinically, and subsequently, if they do have to baker act someone, they do require law enforcement to come out to assist with a non-voluntary baker act. The next uh agency up here is the St. Pete Police Department, and uh we're aware, we've seen in the papers, they're implementing a co-response model where mental health and substance abuse um along with some other specific calls will be handled by community assistance liaisons or social workers with police officers. They're looking at hours between six AM and two AM. And they were initially planning to start their program up in October, but now they're looking uh somewhere towards January. Orlando is another organization uh that is starting up a program, a pilot program, where therapists and social workers work alongside with patrol officers, and they'll be sent to coordinate and navigate mental health-related calls for service. Uh they are looking to start that up again in October. The Clearwater Police Department uh currently utilizes a mental health check team. This is a crisis negotiation um team of crime analysts, mental health professionals, who are paired with patrol officers, and they make uh this model up, and they match professionals with their mental health utilizers. Pasco County Sheriff's Office currently utilizes a behavioral health intervention team, and this consists of a field representative from the Department of Human Services and three Bay Care Behavioral Health Partners. They have two case managers and a mental health service-level supervisor. And then they divide their um assets in between different patrol districts, and they focus on the hours of eight AM and eight PM. The Houston Police Department currently um has a crisis intervention response team, or CERT. They started a six-month pilot program back in March of two thousand and eight, which provided extremely successful. They made it permanent later that same year. Uh they do operate citywide uh for calls, and they have twelve full-time units that are paired with an officer and a master's-level licensed professional clinician. And Dallas, uh we spoke about Dallas also. Currently, they use the Rapid Integration Group Healthcare Team, or RIT Care, as a co-responder model. This concept is a partnership with both Dallas and uh Fort Worth, and they use uh two community-based organizations as partners, Parkland Hospital and Meadows Mental Health Facility. They operate sixteen hours a day, seven days a week, and uh they keep those peak times with their services out there. And the Dallas Department actually works as a paramedic, mental health clinician, and a patrol officer. And uh one thing that Dallas noted uh in their report here is that the ER psychiatric patients dropped by twenty percent with only two percent of RIT Care dispatch calls ending in arrest. So that's the uh Dallas plan. The next slide. This is the action plan. The Tampa Police Department is taking an evidence-based approach by examining the data and best practices and trying to come up with a solution that's best for our area and our organization. We're collaborating with our community stakeholders. Justin Coffey was on the line, and I believe about four or five of his team members were on the line, and we had a Zoom conference with them last week and got direct input from them. The police department's also partnering with USF, Dr. Kathleen Moore and Dr. Max Bromley, to assist us in drafting a broad-scoping request for application or an RFA to assist in behavioral health uh industry experts. Basically, we want to use these experts to help build a program, not the police department, but the mental health experts. We're exploring uh public funds and grant options. Uh we're accelerating this RFI timeline process. We aspire to have this done within thirty days and hopefully have responses back within another thirty days. And that concludes this presentation. Uh Chief Staff? Thank you, Chief Burkhaw. Um Chairman, before I turn it back to council for questions, I just kind of want to put an initial wrapper on the presentation and talk about resources. Uh you heard Chief Burkhaw um and the commitment from Chief Dugan, and of course, the commitment from Mayor Castor and the administration to support the research, gather the information, and then supply the right resources to the to the growth of the city. And, you know, one thing we talked about was resources, uh Chief Burkhaw, and in his presentation with grant opportunities. And from somebody who has done uh provider contracts in the public health community for several years, um you know, that's a viable option for us is to have grants. Now, as we know, grants require uh, you know, it not be in the budget because then it's called supplantation. So I just want to put that out there that, you know, ideally, uh whether it's direct-funded, co-funded, budget-funded, the mayor is committed to finding the resources to support Chief Dugan and the community in the right configuration based on the research, the information uh with those resources. So I just wanted to kind of put that out there as a reminder that grants have really brought us a long way in this city. Uh you heard during the budget presentation that our Chief Financial Officer, uh Dennis Rehero, is increasing his grants uh opportunity through additional FTEs. So, you know, uh again, I can't overemphasize enough that a lot of these high-utilizer programs and providers uh work well with grant programs for two reasons. One, it kind of upstarts the funding and accelerates the program. But two, it also yields best practices that can be shared across the broader response community for future prevention and response circumstances. So, you know, it's kind of where everybody learns together across the country in this space, and we know that that's a challenge, not just here in Tampa, but in the entire uh public safety, public health community. So with that, Chairman, I'll turn it back to you, and we'll entertain any questions from council.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the time and the presentation. Council members, do you have questions? Councilmember Dingfelder, I know, again, you you had brought this up. Um would you like to begin the discussion, or would you like me to go down the um down the line?
No, Mr. Chairman, I I'd like to defer to to my fellow council members, see what everybody's reactions are, and then I'll 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 be glad to to bring up the uh the tail end.
All right.
Uh, good night.
Good with you?
Uh, uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate it sincerely. Again, I wanted to applaud and thank Councilman John Dingfelder for his leadership on this issue. Uh the way I I I see this going forward as proposed, uh is as I understand it, I I support it. I see this working with the administration on this. I think with regards to some of the issues that uh Chief of Staff Bennett brought up as to the budget and grants, I I and I and I don't want to speak for Councilman Dingfelder, and I obviously defer to him on this issue. I think the goal of the motion was to make sure that this program happens as soon as possible. Uh it's a matter of policy um in addition to budget. And um just from my view, and and I think everybody agrees with this, that when the administration promises us that this will be funded this year, I trust them. I I trust the word of Chief of Staff John Bennett, a a good and honorable man. Um, you know, potentially, we can uh uh there's a saying, "Trust but verify." Um we can take a look at timelines, goal-based deadlines from this body, potentially a workshop. Uh, you know, again, I I I defer on all these issues to obviously Councilman Dingfelder. Um, you know, the 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 larger issue of mental health awareness um on this is is so important, and that's why I think that this is such a pivotal issue for a colleague uh to have brought up. Uh today, I believe, is actually Suicide Awareness Day, and it's Suicide Prevention Awareness Month. You know, mental health is is a pivotal issue, and adding a mental health professional to certain calls involving issues like suicide uh and mental health challenges will go a long way towards this situation. Uh we all know that mental health is is in a constant crisis. I've I've said it a million times. If you have um a fracture a leg, you go to an orthopedic surgeon, and and you go without shame. If you're at Florida Orthopedic Institute, you you're you're not ashamed for going there. Uh but if you suffer from depression or anxiety or an acute situational mental health challenge involving a divorce or a job loss, you sometimes don't get treatment. And and when you do get treatment, you often get a culture ready to mock you and shame you. Uh like, and and just be blunt, like so many others, I I've had challenges in my family history and in my own personal life with mental health challenges. Everybody has. And by that, I mean situational anxiety, situational depression, et cetera. Everybody's had that, and we need to be honest about that. I've had challenges, and if it wasn't for my close friends and especially my parents uh and family, I wouldn't be where I am today in life. And we got to make sure that everybody um has the support that a lot of us have had in our challenges. Uh without that support, modest challenges, situational challenges, become unfettered, unchecked, mental health crises. Uh and and here today in Tampa, we have so many families uh who have loved ones who took their own lives, and they go forward. own lives and they go forward, live lives worth living for the departed and are committed to telling their stories. This gesture, I think acknowledges those stories. And, and here in Florida, we're woefully inadequate on mental health. We are near the bottom in mental health funding. Nationally, I just read our, our number of uninsured Americans are at about 33 million without health insurance. And Florida has almost a million Floridians who would have health insurance but for our refusal to accept federal Medicaid expansion money. That means fewer people with healthcare. That means fewer people with access to a, a mental health treatment. And in a pandemic, that's potentially lethal. So I, I, I support this strongly. You know, on another end, I think one of the many tasks that law enforcement has is to deescalate situations where it can be done. And sometimes there are calls that deal with mental health challenges and having a mental health counselor there with an officer goes a long way to potentially deescalate a situation a, a great deal. We need to look to our community partners for this. I refer to groups like Crisis Center, our good friends at Grace Point and so many other partners in mental health treatment and awareness. And, and on a larger issue in closing, you know, something that I've often said about the, the debate on police and, and public safety budgets, when it comes to policing smarter, something that I've heard a lot and that I always stress is people want change, but nobody wants to abandon public safety. We need to invest more when it comes to key areas to secure the change that we want as people. That means having mental health professionals go along with officers on some mental health calls. That means PTSD training and awareness for law enforcement officers. That means better in training. That means implicit bias training with an outside provider, something that will cost a lot of money and that this body is pushing for. Universal body cameras, what's that going to cost you? Community policing, encouraging more officers to live within city limits in the communities that they serve. Issues like that are going to cost additional money. And this mental health investment as proposed by Councilman Dingfelder, and I know with the support of the administration, is a really, really good example of that. So I, I support this. I think we can go forward on it in a collaborative way in, in pushing the idea and making sure that this happens this year. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have Councilmember Citro and I will continue down the line.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. And, and thanks to Councilman Dingfelder for bringing this to the forefront. There are a few people I'd like to thank. First of all, my legislative aide, Tim Heberlein, for getting me in touch with the people at Grace Point. A little background, Grace, Grace Point has done work with TPD in training of over 1,000 officers in 2018 and 2019. These classes cover how to interact verbally, deescalation tactics, Baker Acts, and furthermore. And they continue to offer this to TPD. We do need a collaboration between mental health experts and TPD for mental illness calls that TPD has to go out on. I spoke with Ms. Tyson from Grace Point and I've also had some communication with Mr. Rutherford on this. There is talk, we had a discussion on a mobile team consisting of a licensed clinical physician with a bachelor level person to arrive on scene when TPD is called out, go along with these officers. And once on the scene, once TPD officers have ensured the safety for all, allowing this team, this mobile team of a licensed clinical physician and a bachelor level person to take over and to guide people that may be having issues with mental health, to show these people how they can get help and guide them to avenues to assist them in their needs. I, I, I would like to see a partnership evolve with somebody who has already worked with TPD, Grace Point, get involved in this and look at avenues for funding and grants so that this type of program can be there to help people with mental challenges. Mr. Chair, I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. Next up, Councilmember Goode. Councilmember Goode, if you're on the line. If not, I'll come back to you. Councilmember Carlson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. And thank you to Mr. Dingfelder and also members of the public for bringing ideas to us. The community has been great about bringing any ideas to us over the last few months. My phone is dinging while I'm talking. The, the, just so the, the public knows, City Council has very little power over the police department. By charter, the, the police chief is hired and acquired by the mayor. The regulations are set by the mayor. And the, the police chief, the chief staff, the mayor's office have been collaborative and working with us to, to work on some of the issues that are being addressed by the public. But City Council, other than the budget, has very little power influence over, over how the, the police departments run. With that said, I, we are listening. We're, I think we're sympathetic and we agree with some of the things that are being recommended by the public. But also I have to say that at least in my district, the, the, the members of the public are overwhelmingly in support of the police and they're overwhelmingly in support of being protected by the police. And so there's a delicate balance there that we have to walk in trying to do this and we need to do it collaboratively. In fact, the protests in South Tampa have, have not convinced people that, that, that people speaking up have good ideas. In fact, they're, they're making residents in South Tampa more loyal to the police. And so the only way that we can get positive change going forward is through a collaborative effort. And I understand that the, the police department has been holding meetings. I've also, and Zoom meetings and other meetings, I've heard feedback from members of the public that those, they think those, some of those meetings are not authentic, that there's not real listening going on, that there's not real work going on. And so I encourage the, the administration of the police department to work closely on those. The forum for this really should be the police communicating with the public. The City Council is the forum for holding this, but really it should be a forum between the police and the public to try to work it out. And, and as I mentioned over and over again, we're dealing with the mistakes of the past. You know, the last administration antagonized black people, poor people and homeless people and created a militaristic culture that incensed many members of the public who naturally want to see those things changed. I mean, the fact that, that there's the solution to homeless people in downtown apparently was to take out benches is just appalling. There were so many really bad appalling decisions that were made. Militarizing the police embarrassed City of Tampa on a worldwide scale in the international publicity around the RNC convention. And so now the new mayor and the new administration, new city council are all focused on helping address the different issues that are, that are being discussed. But I would, I would ask the public, please partner with us if you want to talk to us about an issue. My email is bill.carlson@tampagov.net. I've met and spoken with many people already, but please reach out to me, reach out to my colleagues. We want to hear the ideas. We want to work collaboratively within the capacity that we can. In this case, my colleague, Mr. Dingfelder used the budget as a hook to get this discussion going, but ultimately how this is set up, other than funding is up to the administration. And so we're, we're trying to work with them and we want to move many of these issues forward, but we need multiple conversations to go on at the same time. And the last thing I'll say is that, you know, based on the feedback of the public that you all heard earlier today and the feedback I've been getting, they really want this Kahoot style program to be separate from the police. And again, that's going to be an administrative decision other than budgeting. But I would ask everybody, instead of, you know, instead of criticizing everybody, let's all try to sit down and, and work together collaboratively to make real positive change for our community and make our community a benchmark city where other cities will be copying what we do over the next years. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilman Goode, are you, are you there, sir?
Yes. Can you hear me, sir?
Go ahead. I had called on you, but I think there was a connection issue, but go ahead if you have anything.
Again, thank you for your leadership. Just asking them, sir. Mr. Chairman, you have to have been on the playing field to know how the game is played. Unfortunately, I've been on the field and I know how the game is played. I've dealt with mental illness in my time at the police department. I do understand it. You don't have to have a MS degree to understand when someone's, has a psychological problem going on. You just need to know that community and know who has it. I can remember the story of a young man who went to Middleton High School. He was about probably 300 and some pounds, maybe about 6'2". I just respond to his house maybe every other week. His parents had to pull his shields inside of their house to separate him from the family because they felt maybe he might hurt them during the night. So he had no access to the other section of the family's house. Other officers sometime would come, I didn't know this young man, so they didn't understand the dynamics. And the reason I say you have to understand communities and that's why I believe so much in community policing. You have to have officers who understand the community. Officers who understand the people who live in those communities. I don't care what community, understand who's there. Understand who has mental illness because you'll know that when you're involved in those communities, when you're coaching, when you're doing other activities in there. I love our officers. I think they do a great job, but sometimes everyone gets misguided at times. A lot of times we have a lot of officers who don't live within the city limits, they live outside. So they're not fortunate to be a part of a lot of activities that go on in the city limits and in the county sometimes. And that's a double edged sword sometimes when dealing with our communities, especially African American communities. You know, I looked at the list of potential places that have programs and some of those places don't have programs yet. So I don't know how we're looking at some of these programs who don't have a program up and running yet to understand what's going to be bad or what's going to be good. I do like the fact that there are some programs that are out there that I think we need to make sure we really research. But I also want to make sure that the community is involved in this partnership. Want to make sure that there are legitimate agencies out there that can really partner. But I also want to make sure that, you know, you have to look at the other side as well. And I have to look at all sides because I've worked on all sides, been involved in our communities, been involved in the police department. So I think you have to make sure that the union has a seat at the table too, to make sure that they have some type of input. We, we just can't shut them out. I know people don't want law enforcement there, but I can tell you, when you go on some of these calls, yes, you can have some licensed professionals there, but things can go bad in split seconds and you may need somebody there. I saw this Houston program that seems viable because they've got some licensed people that can make decisions on Baker Acts and do some things, the Kahoots program. So hopefully the administration can come up with a good base to be able to formulate this program for the community. But again, the same side, working with the law enforcement agency to make sure that they're on board. Sometimes change with police departments are hard, you know, people don't like change sometimes. But again, we serve at the pleasure of the people. A lot of times I didn't like changing group policies at the police department, thought they were way out. But again, we have to go with what's put in front of us. So I'm hoping that there's a collaborative effort with everyone to bring a sound based program. I know a lot of communities don't want the police involved and that's fine as well. But at some point, the police may be involved in some aspect of it. So we have to make sure what aspect of that, that we will be involved in. That's why I say everyone needs to be at the table. I want to make sure that the administration gives them a seat. We've given all the activists a seats and everyone's at the tables. When we collaborate together, we come up with a better plan. Because when we're separated, we have division. We don't need to have division. We need to have everybody working together to have a solid plan because it's all about the people, it's all about the communities, not about just one group or another group. It's about doing what's right for all. And I'm always about compromise. Obviously, don't say what we can't do, but what can we do? I'm always going to say that. We have to be able to say, what can we do to make everybody get along? There's always going to be one person or somebody's going to be upset, something that's not going 100%. It may never be 100%, but if we can get that 99.9, if we can get the 99.9, I think that's a hub of, of goal that we can, that we can obtain. Again, it's about being on the field and it's the experience of being on the field. And I think you've got a lot of different agencies and partners that have been on the field. We just got to get everybody to make this team, get it across the goal, to get those points. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I yield back.
Thank you very much. Councilman Miranda, would you like to speak, sir?
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I just want to say thank you to all that participated, the 10 individuals from the community who spoke very kindly and brought the facts out to us this morning, or this afternoon, I should say. I want to thank Chief of Staff Bennett, Chief of Police Dugan and Assistant Chief Burkhoff. I believe that Chief, Assistant Chief Burkhoff did an excellent job in making the presentation concerning all the different venues that he's working on with, especially with University of South Florida. I want to thank Councilman Viera, Councilman Citro, Councilman Carlson, especially Councilman Goode, who sounded very, very knowledgeable of the facts and, and what we're going through in this country and hoping that I'm wrong, but there's more to it than just what's happening today. This country has never had an experience of what it's going through. And I believe that this is not going to be something that subsides, but we're going to need more attention to solve the problem. When you have COVID-19, you have unemployment, you have finances and, and, and you have a sense of division in this country, mental health is not going to get better, in my opinion. I hope I'm wrong. But these things have to be addressed. And when you had a 4% unemployment and now it's at between 8 and 10%, it's certainly going to be something that takes anyone. It could be anyone, including myself, that you need help. And the individuals that have been bringing this up, a value of the 10 opinion that, that keep it day. And I think that this administration, from what I see, is certainly doing things to make things right. However, the only caution that I have is that we got to make sure that we do it right the first time. And to change two or three directions would only be not giving the public the information and the help that they need. Possibly there, there's, somebody may say you walk in and you have a situation where you have a problem and they show up and it may be just the uniform of someone that takes them off and gets a little more heated, just looking at, I don't know. But I'm not an expert on this and I'm just saying what, what could be the maybes. I, I think that the administration has certainly taken a good view of this and is going to make this thing happen. I see that they have already set in roads and I want to compliment them also. So I don't know what it's going to take. I don't know if it's going to be 500,000, a million or more because you're dicking at different opinions. And hopefully this thing will not continue to grow, but due to the circumstances that we have, something that we've never had to deal with, it may grow because life is a very precious thing and I appreciate all that spoke today. So I, I hope and pray that the administration can come up with some ideas. And I want to thank Councilman Dingfelder along for bringing this to the forefront. But the administration, I hope and I know that they are going to do everything possible with the help and backing of this council to make sure that this goes up. Thank you and I hope that the grants become available. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Councilman Dingfelder, do you wish to speak, sir?
Yes. Could I, could I defer to you, Mr. Chairman, and then I'll wrap up?
All right, sir. Again, I appreciate the presentation. I appreciate the administration listening. I appreciate Councilmember Dingfelder for bringing this up. And we appreciate the people that come and speak, the people that have been in the streets marching and, and speaking and, and looking at, looking at other municipalities to see how things, how things are taken care of there or handled there differently. I appreciate Councilmember Goode, who brings 30 years of experience, I, I believe, from being on the street, being in the neighborhoods and bringing up something that is very important, the fact that, you know, there are police officers that do not live in the city. And that brings up another discussion is, you know, there's really, there's a, there's a tremendous lack of affordable housing. It's not that the police officers with TPD don't want to live in the city. It's based on their salaries and based on what's available, if there's anything available, there is not much out there. And that's another discussion that we have to have. If you look at how Tampa used to be, I know a lot of retired police officers from 40, 50, 60 years ago, and they'll say, you know, I grew up in Ebor City, I grew up in West Tampa, I grew up in Sulphur Springs. Tampa wasn't as, you know, spread out as it is now. Now you have people out in Wesley Chapel, folks out in Brandon and Riverview, whatever it is. But, you know, the area has grown and again, the city is not what it used to be. And something Councilmember Miranda brought up, you know, these are, this is what's happening now in the world and in this country, it's unlike anything we've seen before. It's not a new civil rights movement. It's a continuation of the civil rights movement that we, we read about and we study about, but on a greater scale. And having said that, you know, the concerns that are, that are being brought up over and over with mental health, with how and over, uh, with mental health, with how, um, we respond to certain calls, um, that needs to be taken into account, because if you look at, um, different cases and different situations, how much violence could have been avoided had things been handled differently? And, and Councilmember Miranda brought something up too, and he says, you know, wha- what is it that triggers or sparks, um, a certain situation? It's just seeing the uniform, seeing a, an officer, you know, with a gun and a holster, uh, whatever it is, is that what triggers, uh, or escalate the situation? So we certainly have to look at not just improving and increasing our training to our existing and incoming officers, but looking at working with, uh, mental health counselors, people that are, that are experts in, in the area of mental health, people that understand PTSD, people that understand different types of trauma and different types of, of ways that, uh, folks are affected, because we are, we're human, and we are, we are all different, you know? Um, and, and we all have different situations, uh, different backgrounds, different upbringings, whatever we have, uh, but we need to be ready and prepared into how we can work with and help and handle, uh, all types of situations. My concern is, if you send someone that is not a police officer alone to a nonviolent call, could that, uh, become a violent call? I mean, you, you don't know what to expect. I mean, look at how a police officer, um, you know, when you pull somebody over who runs a stop sign or for speeding, or, you know, you have to be careful in all situations because, uh, you don't know what's gonna happen. Um, but at, at the same time, um, I don't want to put anyone in harm's way. The person that makes the call, the mental health expert or counselor or nonprofit that responds to the call, or the police officer. We don't need to resort to violence, but we also can't be reckless and foolish and just saying, well, it's a nonviolent call, nonviolence is gonna happen. No, anything can change. Um, and there's been many, many incidences, incident, incidences of, uh, instances of that, I'm sorry, uh, over the years. So I'll stop there. Councilman, uh, Dinkfelder, if you'd like to wrap it up or, or, or begin your discussion, go ahead, sir.
Well, thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and, and I want to thank, uh, I'll get to thanking staff in a minute, but I wanted to thank Councilmen for their, for their, for their deep thoughts, uh, uh, Councilman Viera, um, I had, we had mental, mental illness, my family, my stepbrother, I think I've mentioned in the past, uh, was schizophrenic at the age of 20, and for the next 50 years, he suffered with that, as did the family. Um, and, and Councilman Viera, we, we appreciate you sharing, uh, with us. Um, all the councilmen spoke so eloquently, Councilman Goode's, your personal experience out on the street, protecting all of us, and knowing that community policing is, is, is where, where we need to be at, and we need to, uh, we, it kind of ebbs and flows, but we need to do more of it. Um, all, all the councilmen spoke eloquently, and I, I appreciate it, I won't run through everybody's thing. There wa- there was a young lady who called in at the beginning of the meeting, and she listed some of the, some of the goals that, that I think that we should all be striving for. She said that the community has been just pleading with us for two or three months for a call for change. And I think that, that that's, that's, to me, that's what this discussion is about today. It's a real opportunity for us to respond to the community in a positive, united way, and respond to that call for change and say, and say, you know what, we're doing something. We're, we're bringing a brand new program into this community, and we're gonna do something big, and we're gonna do something bold. And I'm, you know, uh, I think, uh, Councilman Carlson, you know, made reference to the separation of powers. I'm not here to try and tell TPD or the administration, you know, what the program is gonna be and, and, and who's gonna, who the contractors are gonna be, et cetera, et cetera. That's not our place. Uh, at the end of the day, they'll bring a contract or two, to us, and, and then we'll vote yea or nay. But, but in the meantime, I think it is our place to, to, you know, encourage the administration to affect policy and, and to talk about how much these things cost. Another thing she mentioned was that this can save lives. Around the country, there's, you know, that, that it has been shown that, that a, a de-escalation of, uh, of police response, especially in a mental health situation, can save lives. And if half the people who get killed by law enforcement have mental, mental illness problems, then this is someplace that we can really affect change. We could, and the Houston model and also the Eugene model have shown, and I think Chief Bennett spoke to this, we can save money. So wherever we can save money, we can reinvest that money back into this type of program. And so if it's a, if it's a set, a cost savings in the community in terms of, um, you know, EMS, if it's a cost savings to the community in terms of emergency room visits, you know, wherever those cost savings are, we can figure out how to get that money and reroute it back into the community and back into these programs. But one of the things, um, Chief Burkoff, I wanted to, to stress to you and to Chief, uh, Chief Dugan, is two things. One, I did mention that I think this should be a robust program. I don't think we should dip our toe in and then, and, you know, just, just sort of go in gently. I think we need to go in strong. And, and I, I also think that we don't have to just say we have one program. You know, we could take a combination of the Eugene program, the Houston program, the Dallas program, we could use, you know, all the best, all the best of, of those programs and make a hybrid program of our own. And, and maybe if the call comes in, uh, you know, Chief, uh, Chairman Maniscalca, you mentioned, of course, we don't want to send, you know, unarmed people to a dangerous situation, but if a call comes in and it's obviously very, very minor, and we can send, send those, uh, mental health professionals without uniformed officers like they do in Eugene, and I don't think there's any difference between the people who live in Eugene and the people who live in Tampa. We're all the same people. So if they could do that, then, you know, then, then that, that saves money. If we don't have to send uniformed officers, that saves money. Um, so anyway, so, so we, maybe we could have a hybrid program. Um, I think there's no doubt that sometimes if somebody's severely schizophrenic, um, you know, and, and all of a sudden they see officers or flashing lights or what have you, you know, that could really, uh, we know for a fact, that kick, can kickoff episodes and make a bad situation worse. Well, I think that there's a real opportunity to come in low key, you know, to, to these situations. And I do want to defend, uh, Chief Dugan, because somebody said, oh, TPD has no training in these matters. No, TPD has, has been, and under Chief Dugan, has affected training, 40 hours mandated at a minimum, uh, for mental health training for all, all foreign officers. And we appreciate that, Chief, so I don't, I don't want you to feel like you're, you're kicked around without some defense. But anyway, you know, the bottom line is, is I think we, you know, we all, we're all working on this together. Um, we all want to get, I think we all want to get to the same point, and that's the most important thing. I am so thrilled to hear that the administration, the mayor, the chief, everybody involved, and City Council, and the community, we all want to get to this, as, as Councilman Goode says, we all want to get to the same goal line and cross it together. So, you know, um, Chief Burkoff or, or Chief Dugan, here's, here's where my motion is gonna go today.
Wait, wait, uh, Councilmember Dinkfelder, I, I know, I know you have a motion, but we had that second, uh, budget public hearing, and, um...
Well, this is not a budget, this isn't a budget motion, Mr. Chair. This is a, just a procedural motion.
Okay, all right.
I think it's really important to just wrap it up with this. What I'd like to do with this is, uh, again, uh, I use the, the police term, uh, de-escalate this a little bit. And what I'd like to do is, is go ahead and make a motion, because TPD is doing this. Chief Burkoff's putting the RFA or the RFI out on the street within 30 days. What I'd like to do is, is have, uh, whichever chief or Chief Bennett, uh, come back to us in 30 days with a, with, with an informational report at the end of our regular agenda, um, and give us an update on the RFI, preferably, maybe even share the RFA or the RFI with City Council, and then we'll, and then we'll, we'll get periodic reports. After 30 days, maybe we'll say, come back to us in 60 days and tell us what the response has, has been. Come back to us 60 days later and tell us how much money you need to transfer into this program. So we're, we're gonna, we're gonna stay on top of this with regular reports from, from TPD. So my motion, Mr. Chairman, is very simply is, uh, to request that 30 days from now at a regular meeting, and Mr. Shelby, you can help me with a date, uh, for TPD to come back under, under staff reports, in person, in-person staff reports with an update on the, uh, program and on the request for information for...
Um, Mr. Shelby, I don't have the, well, I don't have the calendar here in front of me, but I think, is, is it October 15th?
Yes, it is, sir, under staff reports and unfinished business, October 15th.
All right. That would be my motion for today.
Do we have a second for me, Councilman Dinkfelder? Who was the second?
Miranda.
Miranda with the second, any discussion? I hear none, let's have a, uh, is there anybody opposed to this? I hear none, by unanimous consent, October 15th, under staff reports, Councilman Dinkfelder's motion. All right, thank you very much. Um, is there anything else at this time?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, Council, and thank you, staff.
Receiving file, Mr. Chairman?
Uh, yes, sir, do we have a motion receiving file from Councilmember?
Chairman.
Motion from Councilman Goode, second from Councilmember Miranda, is there any, uh, objection? I hear none, by unanimous consent, we've moved to receive file. Um, we are adjourned by your special call, remember, we have the 5:01 PM, uh, evening session, so we'll hear you, well, we'll see you then, and that'll be virtual, uh, with video. Thank you very much.
Okay, Mary Lou Paul, whoever's coming, let's go.
We are adjourned, thank you.